And I think we're already, we're in, Rob, we've got a couple of things to do and we're still working on a few things, but we've got enough stuff to go over.
We'll start it. All right. I think we've got a couple, couple of members that will be coming in a few minutes, so we'll get started.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:03. So before we get into public hearings, first thing is agenda adjustments.
I just wanted to make sure the board understood that they have the flexibility throughout the meeting because it is a public hearing. We might get public input to at any point make a motion. Somebody could second it and we could change the agenda. Not that that's the purpose, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that you had that ability as you go through a public hearing because oftentimes you might hear something that might spark a question around the order of the articles or things of that nature.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
But from a standpoint of the agenda, there are no adjustments. I do want to make you aware of a couple of things. I provided it on your desktop. We received four petitions, warrant articles from citizens. The, later on in the meeting, I will go through those. Three of those articles will not require an extra public hearing. One will. So we're going to talk about that. So that would be one of the agenda adjustments we'd look at is setting a date. Just so you know, I'm looking at the same night as the deliberative session, just to do like a five or 5:30. Do the public hearing on that article, close that and move into the deliberative session. Because I think as everybody in the community knows, a petition warrant article goes on the ballot. So, you know, as much as we want to get the public information in that, there's no worry that anything can be changed or done to it. It goes on as it was provided. A little bit just about the process tonight. In a couple of moments, I'll be taking you through the presentation. We will at first be starting, I will ask Ken to call the public hearing on the capital lease and bond hearing. And we'll cover those two articles after we've gone through the, what I'll call the preamble of enrollment data and things of that nature. Once we've covered those two articles, we will close that public hearing. Then Ken will call a public hearing for the budget hearing. And we'll go through the remaining articles. Once we've gone through all the remaining articles, we've had public input, finance committee input, we would then move to the deliberative piece of this. And in the deliberative piece, we'll be looking at again, same order, deliberations or board votes on the two articles related to the lease and the bond. And then the articles related to the budget. And we'll be taking positions there. I do know that the, the board has called to order. I would recommend that the finance committee call to order just for the purpose of the joint meeting. So I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Can, just real quick, you mentioned the public hearing. Does anyone know that date off the top of their head that we could?
September 7.
September 7. Thank you. Great. Okay. Brian, turn it over to you real quick.
Great. So the finance committee is jointly meeting here with the school board for the public hearing and deliberations here tonight. Myself, I'm the chair, Brian Raeder. Cindy LaCroix is also here. Adam Goff will be joining us a bit later. He had a conflict with work, so he did notify me that he would be a bit late for this.
Thank you, Brian. Cindy, welcome. I know Allison is coming, just for everyone's awareness on that, too. All right. So we are going to move to the public hearing now, the first one. I think I need to recess here real quick, though, for our, stay with me for one second. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to recess until the conclusion of the public hearings. Need a second, please?
Need a second.
All right. All those in favor? Four to zero. We're recessing at 6:07 PM. Okay. So we're going to move into our public hearing. As Andy detailed, the first is around the capital lease and contingent bond. Should I read Article II first? Would that be helpful or are we going to go through it in here?
We're going to go through it till I'm.
Okay, perfect.
I'll take over for that. Okay. Here we have a slide, is the Brooklyn School District's enrollment history and forecast. As you can see, we are looking at increased numbers. That's one of the reasons that we are looking at the facilities piece. The other very important piece is that we have taken more of our physical space to service our students with IEPs and 504s. We've developed self-contained programs in our building that provide cost avoidance and a better educational program for our students. They're not on a bus for an hour, traveling somewhere. They're here in their own community. They're with their peers. They're with the students they'll grow up with. In our actual five numbers, we have been seeing us moving forward. And the projection puts us at about 607 in 2027. So it's, it's pretty much right now relatively stable. But we have seen rapid growth in our kindergarten, surpassing 80 students for the first time in, since we've had the program. And also that full-day kindergarten, which the voters approved, again, took away more space that we traditionally had for our traditional grades one through three classrooms. Next slide. Here is the cost per pupil versus the New Hampshire average. Brookline is in blue. The New Hampshire average elementary is in green. And we look at the trend. We have been working hard as a school board and administration to keep our costs down. We're looking at a cost per pupil next year of $15,833. And the state average will be $19,332. So for the FY '23 warrant, we wanted to first talk a little bit about the budget process. In July through September, principals do needs assessment. We work with the special ed director. We talk with the assistant superintendent regarding our curriculum initiatives and where we would like to go. And all of that is reflected in our objectives and goals outlined in the strategic plan. In October, November, we begin to have meetings with me where we again try to really pinpoint our needs and where we'd like to go, what are our curriculum essential pieces, and we move forward from there. We then take it in December for the school board and finance committee revisions. We determine the tax effort using final budget and revenue estimates, which we had recently done in January. We compare the tax effort percent to the tax cap percent and adjust as needed. And then we get to tonight, which is the public hearing and the presentation of the budget. For the tax cap calculation, on the left, we have the tax rate components, followed by the tax year for 2021, which is the FY '22 budget, and for 2022, which is the FY '23 budget. And then we have the percentage difference. So we see an operating budget that is being proposed at $10,429,549, which is a 4% increase over last year. One of the large budget drivers that we've been talking about with the finance committee and the school board is our increase in special ed cost. That is the main driver, as you'll see later on in this presentation. The warrant articles, we see a request for $743,007 for 48.2%. A large part of that will be the two lease and bond articles that we'll be talking about shortly. So our total warrant would be $11,172,556 for a 6.1% increase, which again, the brunt of that is related to the facilities warrant articles that we'll be discussing. We see a slight increase in local revenue, $906,000, which is up 10.1%. State aid grant is increasing by 11.4% to $2,427,947. Our retained state tax is going down by 24.8%, which is, reduces it to $465,676. So the total tax effort for the tax year 2022 for the FY '23 budget is $7,372,933, which is a 6.8% increase. And the asterisk is there because, as you know, we have a tax cap of 8%. So we're within the tax cap. And the prior year fund balance has been removed per RSA 32.5-b1-a. The Brookline School District returned approximately $530,000 of unreserved fund balance from last year's budget. So that is what we're talking about there that has been removed. Overview of the warrant for this portion of our public hearing, we're focusing in on Articles Two and Three. But Article One is the clerk, treasurer, moderator for one year, and two boards, two school board members for three years. The filing dates for anybody interested are 1/19/22 and 1/28/22. So you just need to come to SAU or the town offices between those periods and fill out the appropriate paperwork. Article Two, the capital lease, is $177,500. It's based on enrollment numbers, energy renovations that are pressing in many ways. Article Three is a lease contingency bond for $37,500. And that's if Article Three doesn't pass, this ensures ADA compliance. It allows us to get, put in an elevator in the school and make some needed safety improvements. I do want to note two things here. First of all, Article Two is a lease. The lease is a simple majority vote. The majority of the dollars allocated in Article Two fall under what I would call equipment and therefore qualifies for the lease. Article Three, the contingency piece, is more related to what I would call walls, elevator, structural pieces. And structural pieces really should be done through a bond. So that's why there are the two different pieces there. The bond piece would require a three-fifths vote by the voters at election day. The reason why the numbers are so different from a dollar amount, the 37.5 only represents a half-year's interest when you first take the bond. So you don't see the major payment for the bond until year two. In the lease, year one of the lease, you start paying the full rate there. Article Four, which we'll discuss, is the support staff contract, which is a four-year contract with the first year being $58,299. Article Five is the operating budget, $10,429,549 for a 4.1% increase. Article Six is our special ed trust, which we are again proposing $25,000 from the unreserved fund balance. Article Seven is the maintenance trust for $75,000, again funded from the unreserved fund balance. Article Eight is the SAU budget for $407,208. That's pending voter approval at all three district meetings. So that's the only article where we need the vote totals from Brookline, from Hollis, and from the cooperative. And that decides if that article passes or fails. So the total FY '23 proposed is the $11,172,556 for an increase of 6.1% if everything was passed. FY '22 versus FY '23. Article Two, the description is the capital lease. There was nothing in FY '22. It would be an expense of $177,500 in FY '23. The support staff contract is Article Four. Obviously, there was nothing budgeted in FY '22. The new dollar amount is $58,299. The operating budget in FY '22 was $10,025,776. It's being proposed in FY '23 for $10,429,549. The special ed trust is funded at the same level, along with the maintenance trust, the special ed trust at $25,000, the maintenance trust at $75,000. The SAU budget in FY '22 was $361,236. It's proposed at $407,208. The contingency, which we had in the budget last year, was $40,000. When we went to retaining an unreserved fund balance, we made the decision that if that passed from the voters last year, that we would not request a contingency fund. So that has been zeroed out. So that gives us again, the total proposed budget numbers that I've spoken about on two occasions. FY '23 local revenue. In tutoring in the preschool, we see a difference of $1,000 increase for a 7.7% increase. The earnings stays unchanged. Food services unchanged. Special ed aid, we're projecting an increase of $42,454 for a 34.6% increase. Our grants will stay the same. Our voted fund balance, we are proposing $100,000 this year, which is a decrease of $40,000 for a 28.6% decrease. Medicaid, which is revenue that we receive based on some students' needs, is projected to go down by $1,500. Kindergarten aid was one-time. When we started kindergarten, the state provided grants to allow that to happen. So we received $131,662 to offset the first year of kindergarten. That no longer is the case. The fund balance to reduce taxes, this year, we returned $517,582. Right now, where we are, we're projecting $200,000, which is the number we put in the budget. So that is a difference of $317,582, a 61.4%. Many of the funds that were in excess last year were a direct result of us being in COVID and the different things that we were able to do. In terms of the other, that's okay. I'll give you a second. The estimate proposed is $50,000, which is an increase of $13,000 or 35.1%. But overall, you see that the local revenue is going down by $434,290 for a decrease of 32.4%. FY '23 state aid estimates, our adequacy aid for FY '23 is $2,427,947 for an increase of $249,281, which is a little over 11%. In the retained tax, we see a decrease in the retained tax, the number going down to $465,676, which is a difference of minus $153,558, or a decrease in the retained tax at 24.8%. Overall, from state aid, we see an increase of $95,723. So we have a little over 3% increase in state aid. The tax rate info, as you can see, we provide the operating budgets from last year and this year. We have the warrant articles proposed from last year and this year. The significant difference in those warrant articles is the proposal for the building renovations. Local revenue, we see the decrease from last year to this year that we've already discussed. We have the state aid grants. Again, that is an increase. The retained state tax is a decrease. But the total tax effort that the taxpayers are going to be asked to do has gone up to $7,372,933. So the tax rate would go from 933 to 1056, which is a 13.1% increase because of the decrease in revenue. The Brookline state tax rate would go from .92 to 90 or minus 2%. So your total tax rate would go from 1025 to 1146 for an 11.8% increase. And that brings us to the FY '23 warrant articles. And now we're officially into the lease slash bond segment of our public hearing. I'll go through these two articles. At that point, I'll turn it back over to the chair. We'll take any questions from those in attendance. And then we will close that segment of our public hearing. So Article Two, the capital lease reads, "To see if the Brookline School District will vote to authorize the school board to enter into a 18-year lease purchase agreement for $2,485,280 to finance the acquisition and installation of energy conservation equipment and related energy, ADA and security improvements at Richard Mahacki Memorial School and Captain Samuel Douglas Academy as recommended by the Brookline School District's Facilities Committee, and to lease and to raise and appropriate the sum of $177,500 for payments due under the lease purchase agreement during the '22-'23 fiscal year. This lease purchase agreement will contain an escape clause, nonappropriation clause, and it's required to be a majority of vote. The estimated net tax impact is 25 cents per thousand dollars." Article Two, the capital lease, here are the elements that will make up those building improvements. First is LED lighting for both schools. Estimated cost at RMMS is $155,610, with energy savings projected at $12,500, and potential rebates for $35,000. Efficiency controls, these are the systems that would be put in place to run our schools via computer at a cost of $234,910, and energy savings of $5,500, and potential rebates of $34,000. The elevator, the restructuring, the lower level of RMS as you walk in, security room renovations and ventilation to that area, $1,500,000. There is a portion of the ceilings in the lower level that would be affected. So there's a replacement of $25,000 there. So the RMMS subtotal is $1,915,520, with potential energy savings of $18,000 and potential rebates of $69,000. At CSDA, we are also targeting the LED lighting at $134,850, with energy savings of $12,500, and potential rebates of $35,000. We are also doing the energy controls, but at CSDA, we're only doing them on the new boiler installation. So that would be $34,000, with our energy savings being projected at $5,500, and our potential rebates projected at $15,000. At CSDA, we'll also be replacing our central boiler system, which is approaching the end of its useful life, for $400,000, with energy savings at $12,000 and potential rebates at $40,000. So the CSDA subtotal is $569,760. It would be eligible potentially for $30,000 in energy savings and $90,000 in potential rebates. So the total of the two projects, RMMS and CSDA, the elements I've described, is how we arrive at the $2,485,280, with potential energy savings of $50,500 and potential rebates of $171,000. Do you want to take questions on each article or would you like to cover both articles?
Why don't we do both for this one?
Sure, okay. Article Three is a contingent article. This is to bring us to ADA compliance, where we'd be adding an elevator and we'd be doing a multitude of security improvements and really reframing and restructuring what would be the, what is currently the main entrance to RMMS, but it'd be a much more formal entrance. And I think everybody would realize that is the entrance. The article reads, "In the event that Article Two is not approved, to see if the Brookline School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,500,000 for the purchase and installation of an ADA compliant elevator and related entryway security improvements for Richard Mahacki Memorial School as recommended by the Brookline School District Facilities Committee, and to authorize the issuance of $1,500,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter 33, and to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $37,500 from taxation for debt service payments on such bonds and notes during the '22-'23 fiscal year. This is a three-fifths ballot vote required. The tax impact is 5 cents per thousand. And again, the tax impact is based on the $37,500, not the full price of the bond, which we would see in year two. The contingency article, we're looking at ADA elevator and security improvements. That is the total restructuring of the lower level. So when you enter the main entrance, you would enter into a new security area and office where you would be greeted. Off of that, you would have a new school library, because we would utilize that space for the school library, and take the school library and make it into two classrooms for our students. We would also be installing an elevator into that, which would make the entire building ADA compliant and help us move forward in the future. And that ends those two articles. So at this point, we'd be.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay. So as part of the public hearing, then, what we do is we open up for testimony in favor and testimony in opposition two times, so everyone has a chance to ask any questions and provide any feedback. So since we went through both articles, feel free to just please clarify whether you're asking or feeling about Article Two or Three, and we'll open it up to testimony in favor first, please. And if anyone on the boards have this, you can just sit at your seat and weigh in too. Okay? Any testimony in opposition? All right, we're going to do one more round. So testimony in favor?
I have questions, but not necessarily testimony.
Please, yeah, questions are great, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have two questions. The first one regarding the capital lease. The efficiency controls for RMMS, the cost of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, the projected energy savings is five thousand, five hundred dollars a year, so that ends up being a, what's the term for it?
Return on investment.
A return on investment? Thank you. By the way, it works out to, you have to use that for like thirty-six or forty-two years for it to pay itself off, depending on whether or not you actually get the rebate. And obviously, that equipment would need to be replaced long before then, so why, why would we do this?
The controls needed in what I'll call Phase One, yet the ventilation components still have not been installed. So what would happen is, we would have the control system in place, as we have talked about numerous times, we'd be coming back to the voters in a subsequent year to look at the ventilation and the other heating units. This would provide us all the infrastructure, so that when we put in the new heating units and new ventilation, that all the ducts and louvers and all of those things open on command and how they're supposed to. And it's, it's a step that you could pay for either in Phase One, because it will increase the efficiency of our boilers, but that energy savings will also grow over time when you do the other phases, because again, your unit ventilators, your, you know, heating controls for different times of the day, like I'll use an example, this gives you the ability on the snow day we had last week, for the custodian to be at home and turn down all the heating systems and run it as more of a weekend day than a, a school day. So I think if you just look at the energy payback, you're absolutely right, it doesn't make sense, but the, the concept is based on doing all phases of the projects, because at some point, the, the ventilation systems have to be changed at RMMS, and if you recall, we made the conscious decision not to replace boilers at this time, because they're not that old, but that building is being run off of residential boilers, not commercial boilers, which are very inefficient. The system we would put in for controls would also be allowing us to upgrade when we installed the new boilers down the road.
All right, thank you.
Can I just, real quick, so, because Brian, I, I was thinking this, you know, as we're looking, I was thinking the same thing, I, but one thing that struck me, I remember with our meetings with Mike and EEI, those potential rebates, I thought they were very conservative, if I remember right, in putting those in, so these were, these were like the minimum, but they felt highly confident on achieving those, is that a fair statement to, to make?
I, I think it is fair. I think you may have noticed in the news lately, there's been a lot of discussions at the state level around energy and resources and rebates and those things, so we didn't want to make unrealistic projections, not knowing exactly where the state was going to go.
Right, okay, thanks. Because I, I agree, Brian, I guess if you look at it with the rebate, the payback certainly looks a heck of a lot better, but that assumes the rebate comes through.
Ken, to your point, I mean, the rebate programs can change. I mean, they change every year, federal programs, state programs, so it could go up, it could go down.
Sure, yep, thanks. Brian, you had another?
Yes, my other one was actually going back a couple of slides to the local revenue And my question was about the fund balance to reduce taxes. Why would that be considered a revenue?
That's just the way the DOE looks at it. Oh, sorry. That's the way, that's just the way the DOE looks at it, that's the way we have to calculate all of our paperwork to the DRA.
Okay, I don't know if that makes sense, but I understand that you're doing what you have to do for it. I understand also, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Since we're looking at that, I was sitting here pondering the difference between state aid grant and retained state tax. I recognize it was fairly, came out, one was up, one was down, and it was fairly similar. What is retained state tax? I'm not as familiar with that as...
It's also called the, it's also called the swept amount, and there, there are changes being made on the state level, and you, it's a reduction, but it's not a real reduction, because you're getting it back through adequacy aid.
Okay, so it, so that's what I was going with, is long-term, are we going to see kind of a null impact, or are we going to see things continue to trend down?
No, I think this is a one-year deal.
Okay.
And after that, it'll go back to being the same way.
Okay, thank you. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so is there any others in favor? Please come on up.
John Aliatsi, I live at one-ten North Mason, here in town. I just had a question, I guess, about Article Two, and I apologize, I'm kind of new to this. So are, are you guys voting to do these capital, I guess, updates, because there's an issue, like it's, the equipment's old, and it's at the end of its life cycle, or is it, you know, a firm came in and said, hey, we can find a way to save you guys money with, you know, either rebates or energy efficiency? I guess, I'd like to understand, kind of how, what's the genesis, really, for the project?
At RMMS, you're looking at an aging building with aging infrastructure. It's basically sixty years old and has been patchmilled along the way. So that's what I mean by residential boilers and different things. This starts us in a more formal process of bringing our building current. We're just finishing up a similar program with the Hollis schools, which are about the same ages as the Brookline schools. And what that has allowed us to do is take an aging building in HPS, Hollis Primary School in RMMS, are very similar, and we have added decades of use to that building. So that's the same philosophy we're looking for here. One of the reasons we're not looking to do as much at CSDA is because it's a twenty-year-old building, and its infrastructure is in much better shape. The only piece that really needs a significant upgrade is the boiler, because it has one boiler plant for the twenty years, and it takes a, it has an extreme workload. It will probably looking, be looking at a boiler where it's a dual boiler system, so that we're not taxing the system on, on a daily basis, like when we hit cold strikes like we're doing now.
Yep. I guess one question I have, you mentioned potential energy savings and potential rebates. What's driving the potential piece of that?
Basically, I never bank on anything that's under the state, control of the state.
Yep.
And I don't want to sit here and say to people, we're going to get that money back. I can tell you that we have received all our rebates throughout the program in Hollis, and we have put those right back into the buildings to address other issues, but with a lot of discussion going on at the state, I'd rather say it's proposed, and then when it arrives, it's not a windfall, but it's something that we can now allocate to do another piece of the project.
So have the Hollis updates been in place long enough that you have somewhat of an understanding of what the savings and the rebates kind of turned out to be, or not yet?
Well, we, we maximized our rebates.
Okay.
So we've got everything that was available through the consultants that we used, and we're seeing energy savings there, we went to solar. So eighty-five percent of our buildings are now run off of solar. So we've drastically reduced our energy consumption, and now we're at the point where we're able to look circuit by circuit and figure out what is causing us any spikes, you know, like I'll give you an example, we had a fan in the kitchen that would go on, we weren't necessarily aware of, because it had gotten off-cycle over the years, it was clicking on in the middle of the night when nobody was around. By putting in the circuit followers, as I call them, we were able to identify that, go in and correct that problem, and really continue to make us more efficient. And it's definitely helped with the, the weekend temperatures. You know, we, we still unfortunately had a ice burst with this drastic cold, but we used to experience that on a regular basis.
Okay. Is there, I didn't see it here, I don't know if there is, is it monitored by an external company, or is, and is there like an ongoing fee with that, or is this monitored internally, like the controls and that, that piece?
What we have utilized is, is internal controls.
Okay.
Working with, in Hollis, and I'm sure we can, there'll be people interested in Brookline, what I would call a volunteer energy committee, who has looked at our buildings and kind of really started to target areas. We're going to be proposing some similar steps at the co-op district, as we start to look at those buildings, which are now in, in the twenty-year range. And one piece for the community is, one of the other reasons we're looking at is because of the cost for a new facility. Amherst is proposing a new elementary school, K to five, with a price tag of fifty-five million dollars. That's what a new building costs. I believe that if we go through probably three phases incrementally, that we'll probably put twenty to thirty years onto these buildings, and getting on a regular capital improvement plan like we've done under Kelly's leadership will allow us to maintain that.
So is this, then, what, you guys are considering Phase One?
Correct.
Okay, so how does it play in, have you kind of projected what, Phase Two and Three? I'm just trying to understand, you know, even from a tax perspective, right? It looks like combined, we'll call it thirty cents per thousand dollars, right? So that's Phase One. How does, how does, like, projected Phase Two and Three look?
Well, first of all, this is either twenty-five or five.
Okay.
So it's not the two of them together.
Oh, it's twenty-five or five, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so the voters would go and either pick Article Two or Article Three, and that would dictate the tax rate. In Phases Two and Three, as I was saying to Brian, it is the, the actual ventilation systems at RMMS, and then some upgrades to some structural areas around offices and those pieces. At CSDA, it's the continuation of energy upgrades and updating the building. So you're probably, I think it's easier if I give you kind of the projections in, in Hollis. We, we went for about the same amount of money in the first round, we came back, I believe it was two or three years later, and asked for approximately three million. And then, because money is relatively cheap now, the Hollis Budget Committee actually recommended to us that we take out the final two to two and a half million now, to jump in before the rates, as they project to go up.
Okay.
So that's our total bill. This, this project's originally started out to do everything at eighteen million for the two schools. We believe we're going to be able to get a lot of bang for our buck out of what we're proposing.
Okay, and apologize all the questions. One more, is this, so does the project as it is now, does that account for maybe projected population growth and kind of student increase, and kind of what you're saying, instead of building a new school, doing this now and kind of getting the school ready for maybe expanding students, does it account for that?
What, what this does right away at CSDA, it provides us with two more classroom spaces, which will allow us to have, is it five, ten?
RMMS.
RMMS.
Excuse me, RMMS, is it five?
Yeah, we'll have five at each grade.
Yeah, so we'll have five classrooms at each grade level.
Okay.
Okay? And then, in one of the later phases, is in addition to CSDA, in the neighborhood of three to five classrooms still to be determined, preparing for that enrollment growth, which is what we're seeing.
Okay, okay, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, thanks for your questions. All right, I'm going to ask one more, any testimony in opposition before we close? Okay. So with that, then, I'm going to declare this first public hearing closed at six forty-five. So that moves us to our second public hearing. Now, the second public hearing, just before we get into it, is around the warrants that we looked at that are not relating to capital lease bonds, and we'll go through those. And do, I think probably here, it may take sense to stop and pause for...
Each one?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yep. So Article Four is the support staff contract, "To see if the Brookline School District will vote to approve the cost of items included in a four-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Brookline School Board and the Brookline Education Support Staff Association for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school years, which calls for the following increase in support staff salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. In year one, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. In year two, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty. In year three, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen. And in year four, forty-six thousand, forty-three dollars, for a total of two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And further, to raise and appropriate a sum of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the first fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, such sum representing the additional cost attributed to the increase in support staff salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The estimated net tax impact is eight cents per thousand." The financial impact of the support staff negotiations, year one, you see the wages and step increase to targeted table adjustments for fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. In year two, you have wages and a step increase of five percent to the table for fifty-one thousand, fifty-six dollars. In year three, you have wages and a step increase of four percent for thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one. And in year four, that number is forty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. There is also a RBT recertification stipend. An RBT is a person specifically trained to gather data in working with identified students to track their progress and be able to bring that back to the IEP team and to the classroom teachers. They would, are required to go through forty hours of mandatory training and would receive a stipend of twenty-four hundred dollars. We're looking at, in year one, one additional parade day, so we're asking our paraprofessionals to come in for one additional day at the beginning of the year. Your paraprofessional is often the support person working with a student in their IEP, and the sooner they can understand and gain understanding of the IEP and working with their special ed teacher, the more likely we are to have success with that student. We're also increasing a parade day in year three, and that's why you see the fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars in year three. They qualify for one additional holiday for three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four, and there is a longevity bonus put into year two, and that's how we arrive at the four totals, year one being the fifty-eight, two ninety-nine, year two being the fifty-eight, five twenty, year three being thirty-eight thousand, six sixteen, and year four being forty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. In the support staff negotiations, we increased management rights, we clarified language regarding the work week, the probationary period, the time log submission and requirements, how vacation is accrued, how the, and the method and procedures to apply for the sick bank. We increased incentives for paraprofessionals to obtain certifications, and we created incentives for custodians regarding maintenance certifications. I'd like to thank the board members who worked on the negotiations, a lot of hours of... A lot of hours go into this. One of the difficulties that we are experiencing, like many other entities, is being able to hire hourly wage people. So people in this union are secretaries, are custodians, par professionals, food service workers, all of those individuals who provide great service to our students, do a fabulous job. And we were just losing the competitive ability to attract those folks as well as to retain those folks. As many times, our pay scales had fallen behind many of your local retail stores. And thus, it was very difficult in a very demanding job working with children. And many pares were selecting other alternatives. So I want to thank the board for their efforts to come to this agreement. And I want to thank all our best our staff for all their efforts over the last two years during the pandemic. And I'll turn it over to the chair.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, for Article 4, open up for any testimony in favor.
I just want to say also, kind of what, echo what Amy said. You know, I think this is such an important contract considering the couple of years that we've had between the work that the custodians have done and our need for paras. So I don't want to, you know, downplay the importance of this contract and making sure that that entity feels good about where we're at. So I'm glad that it looks, I think it looks great.
Thank you.
I'm also wondering, is there, does, do paras as part of the contract participate in professional development? Do we know that?
I'm sure they do.
That's a Gina question.
Yeah.
So the, right now, they have one professional day prior to the start of school. This contract is proposing a second one.
Great.
And then in year 3, a third one. They do have a very minimum amount of professional development money available to them for the contract, within the contract. So if they wanted to do something on their own time or take a professional day during this year. So this is getting us more in the direction of providing more support and training.
Great. Because I know so many of our paras have very important roles with a lot of our students. And the more opportunities they have for that, the better.
Okay.
Hi. So I have a couple of questions, comments set. First of all, the support staff contract is pretty much always a fairly non-controversial thing that I've seen in the past. It's, it supports the people who do very important, essential work here. And the contract itself is not like large dollar amounts. So it doesn't have huge impacts on our budget. We've been tremendously grateful for all of the, especially the custodians who've been cleaning and have to, you know, work in this environment in COVID times. They've been doing a tremendous job for it. I had just a couple of questions. One is, why is this a four-year contract when we've been doing three-year contracts in the past? What was the driver for that?
So our prior agreement was actually also a four-year agreement.
I'm sorry, what?
Our prior support staff contract was also a four-year agreement.
Was it?
Yes, our support staff for Brookline tend to go a little bit longer, not too, not too long, like five years, but absolutely.
Okay, then I'm misremembering that, so.
The other piece, Brian, is we intentionally are trying to keep the support staff and the teachers from being in the same year because of the significant budget it would have if both were up together.
Okay, okay. I, I think everybody knows I'm not a great fan of San Bernice contracts because I'm, as I'm concerned that it takes power away from the voters. And it's basically, you're asking one set of voters to make a contract that binds another set of voters for it. The support staff contract is less of an issue because it's a smaller dollar amount. The professional staff contract is much more of an issue for that one with, as far as, you know, what the real tax impact of it is. So I'm good with that. I will say, one thing that concerns me here is the inflation right now. We're seeing the towns are giving more generous raises to their staff right now because of inflation. And so when you have a fixed four-year contract, that flexibility is taken away from you to be able to adjust for that. So we do have to, you know, be aware that sometimes when we do the fixed, the fixed contract like this, it actually has less buying power going in depending on what inflation actually does. So I just want to make you aware of that. But I support the contract, you know, these, like I said, they do tremendous work. I'm glad that it's been negotiated and done. I had one question though. I'm looking at, in particular, I'm looking at the differences in the, for the wage plus step increase for year 2 and year 3. If one's like a step increase plus a 5% table and the other one's a step increase plus a 4%, I would have expected there to be less difference between those numbers than they are now that maybe due to some complexity. But I would have expected the, you know, based on the $51,000, I would have expected the other one to be a little over $40,000 rather than $37,000?
So some of that has to do with members going off of the table? So they're no longer getting the step plus the increase? They're just getting the flat increase? And that happens in Brooklyn. Depending on which, which column you're in, which category of employment, that might happen when you've been here for six years or eight years.
Yep, all right, great, thank you.
Okay, any testimony in opposition? Testimony in favor? And testimony in opposition? All right, we're going to move to Article 5.
Article 5 is the operating budget to see if the Brookline School District will vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant or technicals and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $10,429,549. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $10,397,099, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13XNXVI to make up the issue of a revised operating budget, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated net tax impact on the operating budget is $9.49 per thousand. The key budget changes. We see an increase of $403,772 for a 4% change. We see an increase of $2,500 in academics. In regular ed personnel, we have an increase of $51,074. In special ed personnel, we have an increase of $40,400. We have a need for, to replace a copier at $5,000. We had shared services software of $12,146 and facilities/safety upgrades of $20,200 for a total of $131,320. Also, in the operating budget, we have teacher salaries. We're actually going down $61,656. Retirement benefits are going down $67,805. That's because we had budgeted for retirement and we have no retirements in FY '23. The contingency article, which we used to have for $40,000, was replaced last year by the retained fund balance. And we told the voters that if they passed the retained fund balance, that we would zero out the contingency. The major driver, as we've been discussing at many of our meetings, is our special ed contracted services, which are transportation materials and students who, in some instances, are receiving their services outside of the district. It could be a day placement or it could be a residential placement based on their needs. And that is $528,790. Special ed new position is $40,400 based on program and student needs. In the category of discretionary or other, it's $4,043, which is your, some minor academic pieces, an item in the CIP and maintenance. So that's how we have our net budget change of $403,772 for a 4% increase. The operating budget, if it is not approved, the FY '23 default budget would go into place. And here's the summary of the default budget. Last year's FY '22 operating budget was $10,025,776. Items that are required by law are contracted. Increases or reductions, well, that's an increase of $479,079, with the brunt of that being the special ed services that we discussed. One-time FY '22 expenses, these are items that were in the FY '22 budget that were one-time expenses. So they get deducted out of the default budget for $107,757. So that gives us the FY '23 default budget of $10,397,099. Some details on the default budget. Wages and benefits are required to go up by $10,338 because of contractual obligations. Special ed services and transportation, again, this is the brunt of our increase, Health, dental, FICR, and New Hampshire retirement will go down by $13,487. Regular ed transportation increases by $10,960 as we're heading into a new transportation contract. And other various small amounts decrease it by $700. And that concludes Article 5, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before, just a quick question I had as far on, at the very start on the key budget changes, we have, I just want to, I think we might be double counting potentially on what we're showing. So we show special ed personnel of $40,400 there, which is part of the 131, I think. And then if you go to the next page, it shows that same position again. So is our increase really just the 131 minus 40, so 90K?
No, that's not double counted because it's just a different way of looking at, those are the major changes. And then it's also a budget driver, so, in the new items.
Aren't all those special ed of $569,000 new drivers? And I guess that's what I'm not following.
Well, in the special ed personnel, that's a new items request for the $40,400, which is part of the 131,320. When we look at the special ed items of $528,790, that's our outer districts, transportation services that we're obligated to. And then we're also showing the new position again because that's a major change to the budget. So we are showing it twice, but we're not double counting it.
Okay. All right, thanks. Let's open it up for questions or testimony. So I'll start with testimony in favor.
Just another follow-up, just a quick question from my understanding. The special ed contracted services, transportation materials, $528,790 versus the $471? Number required by law. Is that, oh, is the regular, no. I don't understand the difference between those two.
So your question is the $528,790?
Yep.
And the $471,968? From a default budget standpoint, it has to be a legally obligated service.
Okay.
Okay? So minimum that we have to do is the $471,968.
Okay.
To meet all the needs, we have $528,790 in the budget.
Okay, so there's a part of that that's not necessarily considered to be required?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so any testimony in opposition? Testimony in favor? And testimony in opposition? Okay, we're going to move to Article 6, which is a special ed reserve trust.
Article 6, the special ed reserve trust to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of up to $25,000 from the June 30 unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2023, to be added to the previously established special education expendable trust fund. No amount is to be raised from taxation. Although there's no increase in tax rate for FY '22, if the voters approve this, they're foregoing a reduction of 4 cents per thousand. The special ed reserve trust, its current balance is $225,000. The anticipated use, because of special ed costs that have come in this year that were not projected during last year's budgets, new students arriving, is $200,000. So the anticipated ending balance would be $25,000. We would add the 25,000 from, to start to replenish the fund again and have an anticipated ending balance of $50,000. The maintenance, maintain the balance, the goal is always $225,000. This was established, I want to say about five years ago, to be a fund that was there when we had unexpected families arrive whose students needed special education services. This will be most likely the first year that we've had to go into that. And to do that, we have to have a public hearing. So we want to get further into the budget, get a better handle on our costs. And then we would hold a public hearing, get a greater sense of the exact dollar amount, and ask, seek the board's permission to expend that fund.
All right, so we'll open it up for any testimony in favor? All right, testimony in opposition? Testimony in favor? Go ahead.
I'm wondering, I always hesitate to go in with this. We, what is, like, $25,000 is kind of low. Like, and I look at it and I go, our tax rate is high right now, and I see that. But I also know our tax rate is high because our special ed costs are through the roof. And I understand that our problem is not at this level, right? The funding of special ed is not the town problem. It's a state and fed problem. And that's, the funding issue is not at this level, right? It's the sustainability of having special education funded in small towns like ours. So the issue is that we still have to fund it. And so I look at it and I go, $525,000. I know my number's off, but like, that's an excessive amount of money for us to increase our budget. And to look at and go, well, let's throw a $25,000 Band-Aid at the problem, like, and hope that this is going to fix it if another kid has a major issue that comes into the district or a kid that we're treating right now with a special ed issue has a major increase in behavioral problems and we need to move them out. So I look at it and I go, yeah, that's great, but that's not going to... So I look at it and I go, yeah, that's great, but that's not going to fix our problem. So, like, I, but at the same time, I don't know what the solution is other than, like, a complete overhaul of the special education system that's not going to occur at this level. Do you know what I mean? So I feel like I'm preaching to the choir here, but I don't have a solution for us at the same time. So I just don't know where-
And it's, just to answer your point, it's kind of a difficult situation because you are moving money out of the special ed trust to the operating budget, which means you are not going to have a large unretained fund balance to allocate to maintenance or special ed. But from a procedural point of view, you as a board could change that tonight to a different dollar amount, or citizens could do that at deliberative session. One of the reasons our balance is healthy is because a number of years back, we had a citizen come up to the podium and change it from the $25,000, I believe, if my memory serves me right, to $100,000. And that's why we were able to make that significant progress. So those are two procedural ways that that could happen.
Yep, thanks. The, I guess the other last thing to remember too is we do have the retained fund balance now too, which is a contingency, another one that we have in place, if we have to dip into that, and we were able to put the amount in last year. Frank, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, yeah, this isn't the only option, you know, for funding, for funding unexpected special ed expenses. But, yeah, seeing it get this low is definitely concerning and such. If we were not facing a significant tax increase because of all of the other things and changes in revenues and such that are going on, I probably would have proposed increasing it to 75 or 100,000, because that would be more comfortable to try to get us back up into there. Let's hope that maybe next year is where, I think the 25,000, 25,000 gets us a step there closer and such, but given the tax situation right now, I'm hesitant to try to propose anything higher than that. But hopefully next year, because I, this is, this is very low for this fund.
Yeah, I agree with you, Brian, and it's like, it's frustrating because, like, we keep bleeding the well dry.
Yep. Well, just keep in mind, right, today it's 200,000 and it could be 220. There's a possibility we may not dip into it all. There's a likelihood we're going to. But, but, you know, we're talking, just like we talked about the rebates, it's, until it hits, it's hard, I don't know, I guess I don't know where I'm going with that. It's not incurred yet, I guess is the only point I'm making.
No, it just, it really does need to, here, I guess here's my advocacy, like, it needs to stop, like, advocate to the higher-ups, like, for not this level. It needs to go to your next people up. It needs to go to your senators and your congressmen, and the advocacy for special ed funding to come from the feds and follow the child versus being at the town level. Because that's where the funding needs to come from. Sorry, that's my little soapbox.
No, I agree. I mean, again, $569,000 increase in special ed costs this year, that's, that's what's driving our budget as well. I agree. All right, one more, we have testimony in opposition, if there is any, for Article 6. Okay, we'll move to Article 7, which is our maintenance trust.
The maintenance trust, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of up to $75,000 from the June 30th unassigned fund balance surplus available for transfer on July 1st, 2023, to be added to the previously established school facilities maintenance fund. There's, again, no tax rate increase, but there would be a, a loss of potential reduction of 11 cents per thousand. So if you vote to support this, you're actually giving up 11 cents per thousand that you could have back. In terms of the current status, our ending balance in FY22 is projected at $89,497. We'd like to replenish that with $75,000. In our budget, we have actually outlined the proposed use for $102,800, and that would give us an anticipated ending balance of $61,697. The proposed uses are RMMS, CSDA, parking lot resale of $40,500. RMMS, the push bar replacement phase one, that's for your outside doors, $5,000. RMMS gutter, storm drains, and trim of $11,600. RMMS classroom flooring of $17,000. CSDA exterior doors phase two of $6,700. CSDA specialist rooms flooring for $17,000. And CSDA window balances, the final phase, for $5,000. And that's the $102,800 that we're projecting for projects this summer.
All right, thank you. So we'll open this one up for testimony in favor. Okay, any testimony in opposition? Cindy, I thought you were raising your hand, you good? Okay. Any testimony in favor? All right, and testimony in opposition? Thank you. Move on to Article 8 on the SAU budget.
Article 8, shall the voters of the Brookline School District adopt a school administrative unit budget of $2,103,176 for the forthcoming fiscal year in which $407,208 is assigned to the school budget of this school district? This year's adjusted budget of $2,014,210, with $389,983 assigned to the school budget of this school district, will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all the school district voters voting of the school administrative unit. The net tax impact is 58 cents per thousand. The SAU budget drivers, the primary driver is we have requested a new compliance and communications specialist position. That accounts for $70,192. The benefits are going up for two purposes. The increase is $64,042. $32,555 of those benefits are directly related to the new compliance and communications specialist. And health insurance rates are going up 3.9%. And we have two present employees that will be moving on to different plans based on their family situations. So that's why you see that significant increase. Equipment software of $5,025, that is $3,700 for four desktops and one laptop that are on the regular replacement cycle as we have all schools and staff members laptops and desktops on. The compliance and communications specialist is an identified need. It was discussed by the SAU governing board last year as something they wanted to see have more attention. The increasing demand for compliance documentation and other communication matters is absorbing significant time of senior district leadership and cutting into the time needed to carry out their primary functions of educational and fiscal management. The salary and benefits is outlined there with a $45,000 salary and $32,555 in benefits, which we believe will be able to acquire us an entry-level person for this position. The goal is to generate compliance documentation and to provide assistance to the superintendent and assistant superintendent in conveying important required information regarding the school district to the Department of Ed, school boards, the school community, and members of the public.
Okay, so this is our last, last piece for the public hearing, so if, open up for any testimony in favor, please.
I want to actually just say that this is, like, something that, that we've had some debates over within our own board, over whether this is the proper timing of, and like, I debated over even within myself, like, part of me is like, we don't read the cost right now, but at the same time, it is a, I can acknowledge that it is a huge time driver and effort driver for our SAU staff. And that the demands that are placed on them by the public for documentation and legal matters are impinging on their ability to do their jobs effectively. And so I can recognize the need for the position. I can also recognize that there's, there's a breaking point for all of us on taxes. So it's a, it's a mixed bag, right? Like, I can see both. I totally see the need for it at the same time. So it's, it's not something that we don't need. And I know people will sit here and complain about the size of the SAU and how it's getting too big, and yet they continue to put demands on the SAU and the SAU staff and can't recognize the fact that as you increase demands of the SAU and the SAU staff, there's only so much that people can put in, and I don't think they recognize the time, the hours, the, like, nights, the weekends that you guys put in, and how much we appreciate it, and how much you guys really and truly need that other person to do even more today than what you've already been putting in. And I truly appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd like to echo, echo that on both respects. I mean, the SAU budget has been going up significantly, a lot of stuff has been added here recently. But for this particular issue, I mean, I, I also see the greatly increased demands on it, and we also have to be aware that right now, those increased demands for documentation and compliance and issue are falling on people who are in the higher salary ranges for it. So the cost to the district per hour is significantly higher when you have the executives spending enormous amounts of their time doing that versus doing the other things they can be doing. So, I mean, I support this, I've, I've thought about this a lot, but I think that this is, will greatly help the efficiency at the SAU. And even though we're facing significant tax issues right now, I think it's justified.
I say, Brian, also looking at the, these same types of demands and other, like, boards, organizations in the community and local, other local communities, I don't see this issue going away, I only see it increasing in the near future, so this is going to be really important to have. I almost, almost wonder if it's not even enough to hire someone to handle this, but well, we'll see.
Yes.
Hi, name, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
If anybody would like, I have a five-year staffing census trend. I just wanted you to know that I have that for the SAU. When I arrived eight years ago, we had 13.6 people. In FY19, we moved up to 15 people. Then in '20 and '21, we went down to 14.8. Last year, the voters approved our first facility director for the six buildings across the SAU, so we went up to 15.8. And this year, we're requesting the body of compliance person, which would put us at 16.8. I also was on the phone today talking with Mr. Thompson, many of you remember him as our assistant superintendent. He went over to Hampstead. They are a brand-new SAU, and every year the question comes up about removing the SAU. Bob has two buildings, comparable SAU staff, and about the same number of students that the Brookline District has when you look at it from a K to 12 point of view. Bob was kind enough to send me over his budget. We're requesting $407,208. The brand-new SAU at Hampstead is $1,168,668.75.
Wow.
You know, I do believe the model of cost sharing is very, very effective. I know it's costly, but again, you're receiving all the services that Hampstead is receiving for basically one-third the cost by being in a multi-district SAU. And I have that, if anybody would like a copy, Bob, it's public information, and Bob provided that to me. But I thought that was a really interesting comparison since they're brand spanking new.
Thanks.
I appreciate that, because there is always that, and you can't convince me that going to a single SAU would be less expensive than sharing the cost with another district.
The, the smallest SAU I was able to talk to is Chesta, New Hampshire. One district, one building, 500 students. The superintendent is part-time, their offices are in the actual district building, and therefore they don't have custodial costs, the heating costs, everything, all of that is built into their building costs. And last fall, when I talked to Darrell Lockhead, their superintendent, they were $310,000 for a part-time superintendent, a full-time BA, and a full-time administrative assistant, and all the other services were done through the school, so they were still paying other costs. The other piece, if we were to look at becoming our own SAU, we would first have to find space, and it's not like we have space in a building that we can go into. And there are just a number of pieces, and if we were to, because one of the reasons I'm speaking to this is the Brookline, we'll talk about in a little while, received a petition warrant article again to look at studying to move out of the co-op, and if we did that, we would need to have a tuition agreement with some high school, or we would need to build, and we would definitely need to build to be able to house seventh and eighth graders.
Okay, we'll talk about that. So, keep, I'm just going to keep it on point with the SAU budget, and open it up into any opposition? Testimony in favor? And testimony in opposition? Okay, so what's going to, I'll, I'm going to declare our public hearing closed at 7:27 now. So with that, that moves us then into, into our deliberations. So I think you're going to see more input from the school board now on position-taking as we go through this. But we are now out of public hearing, and we're going to move back to our regularly scheduled school board meeting and reconvene at 7:27 PM.
And finance committee meeting.
And the finance committee, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we will start with our deliberations on, see what action the board will take regarding the proposed capital lease and contingent bond warrant articles for the Brookline School District for 2022 and 2023. I'm going to read Article 2, and, well, I don't think we need to read it, we've presented it already. I'm going to make a motion on the floor to get on the floor, to recommend Article 2 as presented this evening. Can I get a second, please? Okay, we have a second. So that's what, as presented for the $2,485,280 for the, for the full project for Phase Does anyone have any feedback?
Yes.
Were you about to, okay, go ahead, Brian.
No, I didn't have anything.
Okay, I thought you were just talking to him, okay.
It, it feels to me like the efficiency controls for RMMS don't necessarily make sense at this time. That can be done with the next phase, which, where it may make more sense. The content of these warrant articles is decided by the school board, not the finance committee. So I would recommend or ask the school board to eliminate that one item from the warrant article, the efficiency controls, just for RMMS.
I think my one concern would be, like, the only reason to keep them included is that, my thought process is, because they have to be included for Phase 2, the, the cost of bonds right now being as low as they are, like, favors us doing the work that we can right now. That would be my only-
Almost like add the ventilation in with this phase to get your-
To, like, the bang for the buck, just because it's like, I feel like it's going, like, part of me is like- part of me is like, I want to get stuff done because the cost is lower, but at the same time, it's like, it's trying to find that, I think that's why we were trying to find that balance of what can we get done, what would make sense, what can we get efficiencies with while balancing everything? And I think that's why it was still on.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying at the same time.
But to me, Phase 2 and whatnot, it feels very ambiguous and not necessarily, doesn't feel to me well thought through, and I say that mostly because we haven't really discussed that in any great detail. It seems a little bit nebulous as to what Phase 2 or whatever is after that would necessarily entail, and I think we're going to have another couple of years of discussion on that in which our plans may change. So taking on a quarter of a million-dollar commitment now to one part of something that could change in the next couple of years, or maybe it wasn't, maybe it won't, but it could well, that's one of my concerns.
No, I was going to say, so same on the controls. I think the boilers, I think, were less than 10 years average, which, I mean, the boilers typically will last 20 years, being residential, maybe not 20, but also not replacing next year. So I'm wondering, when we put in the controls, if we do it now, are we locking ourselves into a very specific compatible system in the next year or two? I mean, technology is always changing. So if we put something in now, and we don't replace the boilers for, say, five or six more years, is it going to be compatible? Are we locked into a single system? You know, that's, that's my other.
Well, and kind of related to this, but on the opposite side of that argument, is if we're putting the boiler system into CSDA, that requires those controls, and during this phase, do we want, do the controls have to be the same? Do we want the controls to be the same in both schools so that the custodians have that continuity? So in a way, does that, so having the boiler system as part of this phase at CSDA, does that sort of necessitate, you know, having to have those same controls? Is that why, was that part of the rationale for?
We had, so yeah, I guess we had a very conscious decision. We've talked about these, and I'm just blanking on why. I was trying to go through my notes, and I can't find, but there was a very deliberate decision for keeping those in here. Do you happen to recall that?
What I recall, which is not 100%, is they felt very strongly that RMMS needed to get some control over their heating system because you have multiple boiler plants. There's one in the, on the Milford Street corner, there's one out back by the playground, and there's one down near the other end of the building. And those are not synced, and at times, we have run into, again, the burst pipe issue and those things because, again, right now, we don't have those controls. I understand the concerns raised. I guess my question is, we know that we have about $10 million worth of work to do. My question is, $2,485,280 can be very well spent, and to Allison's point, your interest rates right now are in your favor. I don't know where they'll be in two or three years. If you're saying to me, you would rather spend the difference between not doing the controls and the controls on something else, that I could support. But I think reducing the amount, I mean, remember, we started off at 11 million from RMMS and just about seven for CSDA for a total of 18. And then we whittled that down, and we whittled that down. This is putting us into multiple phases. I can tell you that, you know, we can still find technology for RMMS and Hollis Primary School, and some of that hasn't been produced in 20, 25 years. So I'm not sure that we will be doing something that would be obsolete in five years. I'm just, I know it's a big bill. I just need to advocate that it's one of those things, kind of like your home. You can only push it off for so long, and the difference may be if one of those boilers or something was to go during the school year, we know from our budget, we're already in a very lean budget, and where would we go for that? So, I mean, we will support whatever dollar amount is arrived at and do the best we can with that money, but I just, I'm a little concerned, you know, we'd be looking at a dollar amount that's probably 50 cents, and I know that's huge in the tax rate, but at the same time, these are things that have to be addressed. RMMS is a very ancient building and needs upgrades. And I will say that a lot of the reasons we've had so much success is because Dan's skill set for the first few years on the job and his expertise in a field other than education, and then bringing Lance on and having the two of them is what's really resulted in a lot of significant improvements to our buildings over the last five years, Dan? Three, five?
Seven.
Seven already?
Yeah.
Wow.
We're getting old.
That I know. Awesome.
Well, and I have to agree. I think, I remember, and this might be, I remember when we started the conversation, the conversation about this whole project, I believe, started with, we need energy controls. This is like the urgent need of RMMS. So that was sort of the most immediate need. So the question was, okay, do we just put something in that's going to take care of what we need right now with what we have, or do we put something in that is going to allow us to scale our technology to what we need in the future? So I think, you know, I think this was urgent relative to, we saw the boilers, we did the thing, and I don't know what the worst-case scenario is if we don't fix them in the next five years, but it sounds as though the potential cost and the cost to, the potential damage that can be done to the school as a result of, or whatever, that could put us in a difficult position.
So, so the boilers themselves are relatively new and in good shape and whatnot. This is basically a new system, not, we're not replacing an existing system, we're putting a new system in place. And it's a quarter of a million dollars, so we kind of have to ask ourselves, is the problem that we're solving worth spending a quarter of a million dollars on it, or just slightly under a quarter of a million for it? And given, and I understand the energy efficiency, and I'm all for that, I'd really love to see solar panels on this building, more than anything. But given the potential energy savings for it, this doesn't make sense for energy savings on its own. It might very well, with whatever we end up coming up with those future, you know, in future phases, but again, we're kind of locking ourselves in really early and paying down, it's a quarter of a million dollars is a good chunk of, a good chunk of money to lock ourselves into something that the rest of it's to be determined later, really. So this is the one, this is the one aspect of this warrant article that I have an issue with at this point.
So Brian, I totally hear all your points because I went back and forth with that items, too, you know. The one thing that I go back to is that third line that says, "The ventilation," because that's tied into the 1.5 million. The DDC controls are going to focus on the ventilation, so by putting in the DDC controls, it's going to affect that ventilation 1.5 million, number two. So it's not just boilers, it's our air handler system, too. And that's, that's the big thing that's in our capital improvement plan is, that's the biggest focus, is the ventilation systems. We've got some high costs coming down the line with, we have ground units, we have roof units that all need, that are in need of repair because of the aging building, like superintendent Corey's here, too. So that's Phase 2, is our ventilation system. So, and it's also the kitchen, and, so we do have, Phase 2 is pretty well thought out as well.
So what's, what's the distinction between the ventilation here on line three versus Phase 2 ventilation?
In terms of, what you're looking for in Phase 2 is you're going to start to replace your larger air handlers.
I'm sorry, did you say that again?
Sure. In Phase 2, you're going to be looking at your larger air handlers, what I would call your rooftop units.
Yep.
Now, those rooftop units are usually, you know, again, looking at the size of buildings, we're heating $300,000 to $400,000 apiece. So this control system is the control system that speaks to the boilers, speaks to the ventilation units, speaks to the ventilation ducts for opening and closing. It monitors your CO2, you know, to make sure the levels aren't too high. It's constantly adjusting for fresh air. It dehumidifies. It does all of those pieces. So it is a significant piece to the overall system, and we will start to get a bang for our buck off it right away, but it's a very small bang for our buck because the air handler units are really where you're going to start to see the ultimate savings or return of energy money, but those units were just too big from a dollar point of view for Phase 1.
And I think what you need to like, look at is like, not only do, I remember when I moved into this town, and I would come to the meetings, and literally every year, it would be like, we're replacing this boiler, and we're replacing this boiler, and by the time we got around to the next boiler, a new boiler was being replaced. And I kind of feel like we've finally hit a year where we're not replacing a boiler, which is astounding to me, that we've finally hit a gap of year of no boiler replacement. But aside from that, there's the huge air handlers, and then there's the, every third room has its own little mini air handling system. So to replace all of that was not feasible at this point because you had to run all the duct work that was going to have to run through everything. So to do that entire, so they, we had looked at doing the entire scope of the project, and that was like looking at that $17 million.
Central energy recovery system was 2.3, the central boiler was 665K, that tied to DDC there, so that's as part of that. Electrical upgrade, about 250K.
And we had looked at solar as well.
Solar's on here for a line of 225K, yep.
And so we had looked at all of these different facets, and we said, there's no chance that we can go to them and be like, let's do the entire system right now. But we knew going in that that, the controls were going bad. Like, whatever small control set that we did have on some of the boilers was aging out.
Yep, that's right.
And that was how this whole thing started. And they're like, by the way, if you do the lighting, you'll have your biggest energy return.
Lighting and controls were what it started with, like Aaron said, we, and we met with two different firms and chose, and then we had the growth thing happen and the increased classrooms, so we had to open the aperture, which is why that 1.5, to me, is critical.
Yeah.
I guess what I would propose, one is, like we've said, money is as cheap as it's going to get, and two, to me personally, I support it because we're where we came from and what started this. But I also think perhaps we, we make our vote tonight, but this is a fair thing to bring up at the public hearing, and if citizens and everyone wants to adjust this down by 234, call it 250K, I can appreciate that, too. But as a school board, I think from what we just talked about and where we started on this project, I support it knowing where we came from in the last 12 months that's gone in behind this. Go ahead.
I just want to appeal to Brian on one point. So that energy savings piece, I totally understand how that, when you look at that 5,500 relative to a quarter of a million, I think that, if you look at that as energy savings while we have this setup, maybe that amount, but if you attribute the savings of that system can apply to the greater system, I think, and, you know, this might be playing with numbers, that energy savings can increase per year once we have the larger ventilation system. I may be totally wrong, and this may not, like, that's sort of like how Kelly does magic with numbers, and I'm trying to do like number magic, maybe, but, but, I mean, I can sort of justify that in a way, that if this is a, you know, if our greater system is sort of dependent on this type of control, then that amount, once we have the bigger system, that savings will contribute to a greater energy saving. I don't know, that, because I can see what you're saying when you just look at it this way and the way it was presented to us, it looks like it's never going to pay for itself. But, you know, I can see how, as part of the larger project, it will.
Yeah, I was just going to say, pretty much similar thing. Like, you can see the boiler, you're replacing an aging boiler here, there's a greater return, right? There's a $12,000 return on that. So you're going to start to see additional returns when you replace, replace the air handling unit. Or the, like, right now, the efficiency controls are going to control nine not terribly efficient residential boilers, but.
And some air handlers.
And some, but then as they replace it, your energy savings should increase as you're controlling more efficient equipment.
And I think the beauty of the, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the efficiency controls are really designed to integrate with a variety of systems. So it's not limited to the boilers. So if we decided to go with more solar because we got rebates on whatever that was, and it became the best, most cost-effective way for us to go, we could opt into that versus the boilers. Do you know what I mean? So we were not tying ourselves into one type of energy system.
Yeah, it just seems like, it just seems like they should be done as part of that next phase where you're putting in those places. So you're, you're basically, whatever system, you know, efficiency control system that you end up purchasing is one that's kind of built for whatever we end up, you know, getting in terms of the systems that it's controlling.
I'm still in favor of putting basically like the central brain of the system in now, because as we face things in, it's no guarantee that all of the systems are going to be the same this phase and then the third phase and all that. So I'm still in favor of putting in the main piece again, that was the focal point of this whole study, getting that piece. And didn't the co-op just put in a control system that they hadn't had before recently?
Well, the co-op is looking at a similar type of thing for their air handling units. And then, but Hollis just finished theirs up. We actually met today trying to iron out how every single thing is now connected to the building management system. So it's all, I hate to say it off an app, and we can monitor it, and we have now ability to look at our energy usage and find out, you know, like I said, why some fans are on, why some fans are off. The other thing that could also happen, Brian, to be quite honest with you, we're going to approve a dollar amount. And then we're going to end up selecting a committee, you know, a facilities company to move forward because it's going to go back out to bid to get the best bid, and what we approve might not be the identical item. And we had to make some determinations in Hollis, but the nice part is we know where we need to go with all phases. So if all of a sudden, you know, we put this in front of a company this summer, and they're at $2,800,000, we're going to make some cuts anyways. And that's happened every time we've entered into a project. Right, Kelly? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Wow. So I, you know, as much as 234,000 is a lot of money, I can tell you that we have enough projects that would enhance our school district that the 234,000 would be well spent.
We have a motion on the floor for the school board to vote, and then the finance committee's going to make, take a vote on their recommendations as well for each one of these. Is there any more discussion we want to have? Are we ready to put a vote for the, for the school board? All good? All right, let's put it to a vote. So all those in favor of Article 2 as stated? All right, that passes 5-0. Brian, go ahead.
All those in favor of Article 2 as stated? And those opposed?
For Article 3, do we still, are we still going to take a vote on this just in case 2 doesn't pass? We should do that, right?
You take positions because the voter is going to the ballot, and that's all, they'll be able to see that.
Very good, thank you. So I'm just going to keep making motions. So I'm going to make a motion to recommend Article 3 as presented. I need a second, please.
Second.
So that's for the 1.5, and that ties back to what we talked about with the elevator lower level security room renovations and ventilation.
There's a typo.
There's a typo between appropriate and additional sum to raise and appropriate and additional sum, not and.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. And mine says two-thirds and that one says three-fifths.
It's, three-fifths is correct. Because we're a ballot voting town, two-thirds is if we were a traditional town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
What do we need to amend? Because I think we need to put that motion as what you just amended. Where did you?
I amended it to say, underlined like nine there. It says to and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of 37,500.
So you made that motion as amended. Thank you, Allison. I'll second it. So that's what's on the floor now. I'm just going to quickly say this one to me is mission critical and I could not support this one anymore.
I think it's time that we came in compliance with ADA.
Wait, I'm confused. Are we voting on an amendment right now or?
On the amended article.
On the amended.
We just made a type of change, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'll never get it.
Any other feedback at all from anyone? All right, let's put it to a vote then. School board, all in favor? 5-0?
Finance committee, all in favor? 3-0.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving down to the proposed school district budget for 2022, 2023. So the first is Article 4, the support staff contract. I am going to make a motion to recommend Article 4 as presented. Need a second, please.
Second.
All right, so that's on the floor for the BESA contract now. We talked a little bit about it from the board already, but any other feedback that anyone wants to make? Guess the only thing I'd say is like we talked about, this helps raise to be competitive within the area too. And certainly appreciate that. Okay, want to put it to a vote then? All right, school board, all in favor? 5-0?
Finance committee, all in favor? 3-0.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move to Article 5 now. This is our operating budget and I will make a motion to recommend Article 5 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. So that is on the table. I just want to quickly make these points that we said we would continue to just note. One is we were, earlier we returned 517K last year in FY '21. We're asking for what looks to be roughly a 467K increase, 569K increase though on special ed, which we've already talked about, but that's just an important, those are important data points when you see the growth here and then you look at the, the budget versus the default and where we stand. And you asked questions that I was curious about too, why it's, of where, why it's just slightly off there. So, and then the last point, we did talk about how we will receive some relief via the catastrophic aid following year with some of these increases on special ed.
I do have a question about slide, the second slide for Article 5. Says regular ed personnel 51074.
That's based on what's on the new item spreadsheet, so you have to refer to that. It should have been a new packet, but I can.
We can just quickly go over, so we had to add sections due to enrollment and then we added a section that was to address a need. So to maintain the section that we had to fund out of grant funds this year, we had to transfer the, the item into the budget.
Is that like Paris or is that?
No, that's a classroom teacher.
Okay.
So right now K1 and grade four have five sections instead of four.
Okay, so that's the new teachers for, one new teacher.
That's one new teacher.
Okay.
Okay. And the, I guess the last thing I'd say is we, we did take, we took some money out on our last round, which was appreciated where we, where we started and where we came down to. So I do just want to recognize everyone's efforts with that too. Doesn't, it doesn't look lean, but it feels lean, tell you that, based on what we talked about before with the, with the special ed increases. So thank you. Okay, we ready to put it to a vote? All right, all those in favor on the school board? 5-0, thanks.
All those in favor on the finance committee? 3-0.
Great. Okay, next is the Article 6, Special Ed Education Reserve Trust. I'm going to make the motion to recommend Article 6 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Becky, for seconding. All right, so that's on the floor. Again, we did talk about this a little already. Is there any other discussion here?
Well, I think it's a good opportunity to remind the public of the deliberative session and this is a piece where I, I, I appreciate hearing from the voters on something like this and, you know, I like sticking with what our standard is. I, I know it's a little, it's a little bit, it doesn't feel super comfortable to have that low of a, a reserve, but if the voters want to see more, they can impact that at the deliberative session.
Right. Yep, very good point. Do we, for the deliberative session, do you think it's possible we can show what's in our unreserved fund balance as well? We have some money in there, don't we? Is that somewhere, I don't know that.
I guess for revenue and expense report?
No, but we, last year we put some money in our new unreserved fund balance. It's not the contingency fund now. I don't think we showed that tonight.
You mean the retained fund balance?
I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word. Yeah, retain, thank you.
That's okay, I just want to be.
Yep, that's what I meant.
I have to do it off the top of my head, but I think it's about 124,000, something like that.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't huge, but there was something we started, so I just, only because of what we talked about earlier, that's, that's the last windfall we have for catastrophic reasons that's out there versus our contingency was previously that windfall if necessary.
Right.
Thank you. Retained fund, I got to get that in my head now.
So you have the unreserved and then you retain some.
Right, right.
And this year, there's not a whole lot of any of it.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any other feedback here? All right, we'll put it to a vote for the school board. All those in favor? 5-0?
For the finance committee, all in favor? 3-0.
Great. We'll move to Article 7 now. That's the maintenance trust. So I'll make the motion to recommend Article 7 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Allison. So that's on the floor for 75K. We had some healthy conversation on this in our last meeting too, on what, between the renovations and the capital improvement plan and why we're maintaining the 75K here and how important that is for the outlook. Made some great points last time and appreciate those and support this. Anything else? Okay, let's put it to a vote. School board, all in favor? 5-0?
Finance committee, all in favor? 3-0.
Okay. So the next one is Article 8. Article 8, the SAU budget. So I will make a motion to recommend Article 8 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Erin. So that's on the floor. So we did, we voted on this at the SAU meeting as well. Allison, you made a point earlier, which I didn't speak up at the time, but I made the similar, a very similar point at the SAU meeting. So I guess I'll just restate, I, I support the idea of this very much. I recognize the need for it and where it's coming from financially. I think this is a tough year to do it and I did vote against it because of that, because of knowing the impacts of the Brookline school that we're going to be seeing. And I don't know that my position's changed on that honestly, but I still, if we, if this passes, I certainly understand the reason and why we're doing it. And in another year, I would, I would be more apt to vote in favor of it because of that. Is there any other?
Like I'm such a toss-up on it because I, you know, I voted with you kind of on this and it's, it's such a hard thing because I know it's so necessary, but it's.
Can I convince you?
I know, I know. It's, it's simply down to dollar amounts. If, if the special ed, the special ed dynamic were not so vicious this year, it wouldn't be a hard decision for me at all. It wouldn't, like, it wouldn't be a decision for me at all. Like that's, it's, it's a matter of, I feel like I'm being forced into a corner and having to make decisions that I don't want to make. And, and that's what I, that's what I truly hate is because I know the impact it has on them and I hope, like, I'm going to say that I don't like what I'm going to vote for, that I feel like I'm voting for what is right financially, but I dislike it intensely because I know the impact of that decision on people that are doing the job and I don't like it. I don't like it one bit. I'm very unhappy about it.
If you're looking at a cost piece, I think, I think Brian's point is important to consider because we've, if we could put a dollar amount on what, what it has cost our staff to do this work this year and what the impact that has had as well, I think that you could see this as a value relative to what the, what we are paying the staff that are doing the job as opposed to what they're paid to do. Because there's only so much time in a day and only, only so many days in a week, you can only squeeze so much out of someone. And these are things that are, that we're required by law to do and to fulfill. And, and in addition to that, we're also answering a request that we've had from the community for a long time, which is we need more information out of the SAU on a regular basis. We need better communication about when meetings are. We need consistency and we simply don't have someone to do that. So in addition to freeing up the, the dollar amount that, that this will give us, it will also be giving the community something that they'll be, they'll, they'll be receiving something for what they're, they're paying for.
And, and I'll just add that, one of the things that concerns me also is I, I do see the enormous amount of work that's placed on the SAU staff right now and I'm a bit concerned about retention and burnout for them. And this sort of assistance taking a lot of this, some of these things off their plate, I feel is, is a good long-term investment.
It's not just the, the dollar, it's a psychological tool.
And there's never a time, I mean, we can't say this is a bad year. There's not, you don't.
There's never a good year.
If we've ever learned like, it's going to be, you know, we, if, if we haven't learned that in the past couple of years, you know, we'll never learn it. We can't wait for the optimal moment to have this.
You are correct.
If I could note that between the SAU meeting and tonight was when we made that, those cuts to the Brookline budget. So when we were at the SAU meeting, we were at 6.1% increase in the Brookline budget. A week later, we met and we arrived at the 4% increase for the Brookline budget.
Yeah.
Because we definitely heard your concerns and wanted to kind of bring it in because I look at more the global picture of this.
No, thank you, Andy. That's a fair point, very good point.
Ken, I just wanted to reiterate the point. The communications specialist, I think it's being driven by a need and requests from the community at large. So I just, I mean, I think it's important in today's day and age to, to have that. I mean, how often do we hear, I can't find the meeting minutes. I didn't know there was a meeting. I didn't know there was an agenda. And having someone whose purpose is to focus on that, you know.
But isn't this more, isn't this more, I thought this was more a compliance thing. Communications, we have that and there's going to be open working group and there are ways to solve that without disposition.
Well, no, but I'm just saying it's having someone whose focus is making sure that everything is visible, apparent, answering requests for freedom of information. I mean, it's all.
We could solve that too if we stuck with some of those, but that's another conversation.
I think as long as we have an, an effective use of the person and it's, do we think we can viably get a candidate? That's the question, right? Like this is the, there's the question for anybody at this point. A hiring market, you can get somebody at McDonald's right now to do the job. So like that, I think will be the ultimate question is even if we find somebody for the job. But you, you convinced me, like, if it's a loan for mental health so that everybody else can, can get what they need and so you guys can get, take some of those vacation days that you're actually supposed to be allotted. That alone is worth it to me. All right. I'm good.
What, do you, does anyone recall what, I'm trying to summarize this quickly, how much we took out to your point, Andy, you just made? 175,869. Okay, there it is. So about $176,000 in our emergent, emergency type meeting where we met again to pull this down because of our budget increases.
And how much time did he spend, did you guys spend doing that for us?
The other thing I will note, just because again, when we're not doing some of the tasks we're doing, the other piece, don't forget, is Gina's efforts to get $82,680 for grants for computers and, and we can't do, we potentially could do more if we had more time.
So it's, yeah, I guess it's, the cost is not, there's not a dollar value, but there's an opportunity cost. You're never going to see it in a budget. So I think that's just important to understand because we do have.
I think people don't necessarily see and understand what it goes into and what, the value that they get from the staff here. Like I, I really don't. I don't think they understand it. I don't think if you're not on the board and you're not seeing it.
That's, that's my fear that I, again, that's why I support this position, but that's my fear is you see, you see a percent increase that's going to get thrown at us all during this thing.
Then it's our job to, to sit there and try and reiterate.
And I don't think the percent increase is, for this specific thing, for this amount on this article, is what is going to put someone over the edge. And I don't know if that's the right thing to say and I, it's the type of thing that, but I truly think that decisions are made in terms, you know, and, and, and I'm not trying to challenge, I'm not looking for someone to challenge me on that.
All I'm saying is, so there's a 7%.
Public.
And then we have this in our hand that we're going to talk about in a minute. So that's the point I'm making.
I know, but I think that.
Okay.
I don't know.
Are we ready to vote?
Maybe they won't vote for me this year.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor? I'm going to vote yes too and we'll talk to this. So 5-0.
For the finance committee, all those in favor?
3-0.
3-0.
Thank you. Okay, we, we're going to have, that's going to be a discussion point as well at the public hearing. Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, keep it honest, deliberative session.
I agree.
Awesome. Okay. We have, do we need to go over this packet now?
Yeah, I just want you to, and I have copies for the finance committee if you haven't received them. The other day we received four petition warrant articles from citizens. The first one is to form a study committee under RSA 194C to create a planning committee to study the advisability of the withdrawal of the Brookline school district from SAU 41 in accordance with RSA 94C colon 2 dash 4A for its organization, operation, control and the advisability of constructing, maintaining and operating a school administrative unit to serve the needs of the Brookline school district. This, out of the four, is the only one that requires another public hearing. So what I'm proposing is posting a public hearing for Monday, February 7th, which is the night of the deliberative session. We would post that for 5:30 and that way we're only out one night. I've checked with legal and that is fine to do and we can move forward from there. So I just need the board's permission on that, which we can. So, I just need the board's permission on that, which we can touch base on in a minute. The other three petitions do not require a separate public hearing. The first one is about the availability of textbooks and other assigned books for public inspection. Shall the Brookline School District direct the Brookline School Board to adopt and implement a policy to ensure that each textbook or other assigned book used in the Brookline School District, as well as a copy of all professional training materials provided to teachers, administrators, and staff of the district pay forward school district funds be made available to the public at the Brookline Public Library in hard copy or electronic form organized by grade and teacher. That article is a legal article. It is advisory in nature. The legislative body cannot dictate policy to the board and that falls under policy. So, it will go on the warrant, but it is advisory in nature. The next one was equality, justice, and unity. Shall the Brookline School District hereby affirm our support for each student's growth and enrichment? In doing so, we, the legislative body, hereby state the following as general principles. The Brookline School District values all students as individuals and welcomes students of all races. We affirm that no race or sex is inherently superior or inferior to another race or sex. No individual or group by virtue of race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive consciously or unconsciously. No individual or group should be discriminated against or receive preferential treatment based on race or sex. Each person shall be treated and respected as a unique individual without respect to race, sex, political, or religious affiliation. An individual's moral character shall not be assumed because of race or sex. Each individual is responsible for his or her own actions. Assignment of fault, blame, bias, or accusation of oppression upon individuals, races, or sexes due to actions of others in the present or in the past is unjust. Virtues such as punctuality, accountability, and hard work are not racist, nor were they created by a particular race or sex to, to oppress another race or sex. The Brookline Schools shall provide equality of opportunity, not equality of outcomes, to each of our students regardless of race, sex, national origin, or religious, religion or disability. Therefore, we, the legislative body of the Brookline School District, with our vote, hereby direct that these principles be incorporated into the relevant policies, resolutions, and curricula of the school district. The same is true here. It is advisory in nature. It is a legal petition and it will go on the warrant article. The last one is return one hundred percent of the unassigned general fund, funds to taxpayers. Shall the Brookline School District rescind authorization of RSA one ninety-eight colon four dash B two so that the Brookline School District returns one hundred percent of year-end unassigned general funds to the taxpayers? As you know, last year, we adopted the, the, the fund balance and this petition is asking us to recall it. Again, it's a legal petition. It will be on the, the ballot, but it does not require a separate public hearing. So, I just want you to bring those four to your attention. We will do as we always have done. Kelly will get those posted and out so that we can do the February seventh required one and then we'll be able to move forward with deliberate obsession and then on to voting day.
Is that last one advisory?
No.
No.
Is there any, like, two-thirds requirement to rescind?
No, it's a simple majority to rescind.
So, I don't, so legally, if something is passed by the voters one year, the next year by petition, something that's already been voted on by the majority of voters can be requested by twenty-
Look at the co-op thing.
Twenty-five, four.
This is, we've seen this for a decade now.
Right. But this is so specific, like, this is, is a very specific thing that was just voted on by the majority of voters last year. Okay, I just, I-
I mean, you could-
I'm stating the, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that I, I'm actually surprised that, I'm surprised that that is, is legal.
Or not, we just, voters need to be paying attention to each and every year.
I, I would, I, I was gonna talk about, I, can we take a, if you're okay with that, I'd like to take a position, whether it's meaningless or not, but just take, can, can this go on, all of that documentation or?
The only one you couldn't take a position on tonight-
Yeah.
That I would suggest not take a position is the one that requires a public hearing.
Sure.
I would suggest doing the public hearing and then taking the position before the deliberative session-
Okay.
On that one article. But you can absolutely take positions-
Okay.
On the other three, I, I don't think there's anything that involves money. So, typically, the Finance Committee doesn't take positions. That would be your call, Brian, on the unassigned general fund balance.
Yep. So, yeah, traditionally, the Finance Committee only takes positions on things that have a direct financial impact of some kind. That's purely by tradition. We're an advisory committee, so we're not really governed by any laws and whatnot. So, it's, it's each, each board can decide for themselves what to take positions on or not. The issue of, of that last one, of the retained fund balance, I mean, that does have an impact on, on taxes and it does have a fiscal impact. So, I could see an argument for that one. I personally can't see a Finance Committee argument for the other warrant articles, but I would encourage the school board to take a position, however.
Okay. So, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that you skip the-
Yep.
The study committee until after the public hearing on the seventh, but that you make appropriate motions for the textbooks, for the equity, justice, and unity, and the unassigned general funds to taxpayers.
Okay. In an effort not to read this again, can I, can I just refer to this now? Dawn has a copy of this too, so we can get, okay. So, I'm going to make a motion, I'm gonna make, make a motion to recommend, this is in the positive now, making a motion to recommend the petition warrant article, availability of textbooks and other assigned books for public inspection. Need a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so, this is in favor of this warrant article is how it's worded right now, just to make sure we understand that. I, I don't know where to start on this.
This seems like a crazy kind of burden to put on the district-
The library-
And a cost.
The, the town.
And what kind of cost is going to be incurred from this? Because this actually is a cost, because we're talking about textbooks and public material, and published materials. So, are we going to have to pay if it's an online, a professional development, are we gonna have to pay to have an extra copy of materials available? And is that even gonna be a possibility because some of that, those courses are proprietary? So, I don't think that this is even a legitimate request based on some of the educational materials that are out there. Like, professional, a lot of professional development stuff, like, some of the courses you go to are purposely, you were not given access to materials to distribute. So, putting it in the public library wouldn't even be an option for you. Like, I've been to many courses this year that I can't distribute materials for. It would be illegal for me to. So, to put them in the public library would be violation of law.
I, the, the big picture concern that I have about this is a couple of things. The first is, what is the, what is the spirit of this request? And it's telling me that this request has something to do with distrust for our teachers and our educators. It has something to do with, it's very cynical to me and, and the environment that we've put our teachers through in the, in the past couple of years. I think any sort of support of something like this would be a cruel slap in the face to our teachers. And I cannot, I just, I just cannot strong enough vote against this. On a practical level, if the spirit is, we have concerns about what is being offered in the classroom, I feel like our policies cover that. I feel like any parent that has any concern, and I think Gina can probably speak in more detail to this, about what is being put forth in the classroom, has the absolute right to express a concern. And there are policies and procedures in place to address concerns about teacher performance, teacher materials, all of those things. So, I think this would only serve, it wouldn't have any practical purpose because the practical purpose of concerns in the classroom exists in our policies and procedures. And so, the only value of this would be to absolutely insult our entire education system in this town. So, for that reason, I just, I, I can't be more strongly against this.
And they also go about compliance paperwork.
So, it's funny you say that. I was gonna, so you articulated that very well because I didn't know how to really get, but I, I would hope if every one of these names is voting for a compliance specialist increase then too, because that's what this is driving. This is an undue burden where we have policy in place to rectify this already and, and allow for those concerns. Or come to a school board meeting and we'd certainly hear that at public input and, and have conversations if necessary there.
I, I, I agree with those statements and, but I would also, the thing that kind of struck me is the expansion out to administration and staff training because, you know, depending on how broadly, if you were to make a policy to do this, depending on how broadly it is, you have to consider your IT staff, you know, their training involves, you know, what sort of software you're using to protect the, the networks here that all the kids and the teachers are using and such, and what sort of vulnerability or could result from, from people having too much of an intimate knowledge of what your, your firewalls look like and what your, what your defensive software looks like. So, that's, I mean, it's an extreme example, but it's, you know, this is very, very broad.
It, it seems like the epitome of the taxpayer wanting to micromanage absolutely everything that goes on. And in my opinion, if that is the steps to which you want to manage things, then please step up for election and attend all the meetings.
Thank you. All right, let's put it to a vote. This is, this is, again, I, I put the warrant, or the recommendation to recommend or this preferred, or this, I'm sorry, I put the motion in favor of this petition warrant article. So, all those in favor? This is school board vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Zero five. Thank you.
And just briefly, for the Finance Committee, is there anyone that feels that we should take a position on this? No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on. I will make the motion to recommend the petition warrant article around equality, justice, and unity. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. That's on the floor now. Is there any commentary here? I think we've seen this, same warrant last year, I believe, as well at the co-op level.
I don't think it was brought to us last year.
At the co-op level.
It was brought to the co-op.
Yep.
And Hollis.
Right.
And I think this is already-
Covered under our non-discrimination policies.
I concur with that. Is there any other feedback here?
We had the whole DEI and we had stakeholders working on statements and advisories. I'm not gonna support something that was put in front of me without the same level of rigor and discussion and bringing in perspectives from multiple stakeholders. I don't know where this came from.
Yep. Okay. We'll take a vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Zero five.
And I'll ask the Finance Committee if there's anyone that feels like we should take a position on this? No.
Thank you. Okay, this is our last one, which Erin gave a passionate plea on, but a little preemptively. You can do that again in a moment, actually. I'm gonna make a motion on this petition warrant article to recommend as presented, which is the return one hundred percent of unassigned general funds to taxpayers.
Second.
Second. All right.
I said my bit already.
You sure did. And, and I completely agree with you. This, you know-
Especially when the voters have, I mean, to me, to put something, the nature of this feels a little sneaky. We've, we've had the voters vote on, on this last year and-
It wasn't close, by the way, either.
Yeah. So, I, I just, I think this is just, feels like a way to, to, yeah, to put something in there and hope that people aren't paying attention.
Right. It feels very subversive and it, it, it's like, it drives you to wanna be like, well, do we need to put in a warrant article that says, should a petition article be put in place that rescinds X, Y, rescinds what we do now, this contingency fund will be recreated? Like, because we have, that would take away any, which seems ridiculous that we would be going in this circle or even thinking that we have to go in this circle because this is where we were voted into. And so, that's, it's a little frustrating.
Yeah. The contingency required a public hearing, and I don't remember, to tap into this, do we require a public hearing for this as well?
For this?
For the, yeah, the general, the general, I was gonna, I'm gonna call it the wrong thing.
The one we did last year?
The unfur, unreturned fund balance, do we need-
The retained.
That's why I didn't wanna say it.
I'm sorry, do we need a public hearing?
Do we need a public hearing? So, in the contingency, we always had, needed a public hearing to use that money? Do we need-
To use that money, you do not.
We do not. Okay. So, it's a transparent suspicion, maybe a transparency piece, which I think it would be part of our discussions at our, at our school board meetings and that would be posted. But I think that may be the spirit of this, just trying to think about it. I agree with everything that's said and I think the spirit of that we can take and, and remember that.
Yeah.
It's not to say you can't have a public hearing on it if you want.
Is there a possibility that maybe we consider that and then add that into an article? Is it out of an RSA? So, no.
So, when the voters approved it last year, it then falls under the requirements under the RSA? So, that's just, just a law, basically. We can always go above and beyond.
Right. Could we do it, like, could we write it into our own requirements in some way, shape, or form so that we would have to follow that procedure or policy to, to use that so that there would be more transparency and trust involved in that?
So, if you can take a look at any of the trusts that we have, we are telling you every step of the way what we think we might use, what we're going to use, you know. So, I, I think Kelly and Andy have done a remarkable job with transparency, so there are no surprises.
But those are, like, required, correct?
But to your point, Allison, if the board wants to do a public hearing to get input from citizens around expending the money, they absolutely can't.
I'm just, I'm curious, like, because the board isn't always the same.
Right.
Right? That's, that's the issue. It's like, the board right now might go, you know, we really, because this is, maybe that's the issue and that's why this is being brought up. Ken has a really good point. Is there a way to put that in so that future boards adhere to the same standard even if?
Right. So, I guess what I would say is, why don't we, this, this could be a discussion at the, at the meeting. We're hearing, if that's what it is, and you take the public feedback and if, if that is the overwhelming response, we have a policy committee and we can look at that in the next year and decide what we, where we wanna go forward with.
Yeah. I like that idea.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion on the floor, though, for this particular warrant article around returning one hundred percent of unassigned general funds to taxpayers. Are we prepared to take a vote? Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? Zero five.
So, a little bit of discussion for the Finance Committee. Personally, I think that this is a fiscally related issue that we could take a position on. This particular topic, I don't believe that I was in favor of this change last time because of the transparency issues. Having contingency fund, there's a warrant article there. It's much more clear what monies you have here. This feels a little bit off the books because it's not really reflected anywhere in the town reports that you can go back and say, you know, okay, they kept and spent some extra money here that, that's not on the books. So, I wasn't necessarily in favor of that. I personally don't feel like we need to take a position on this, however. I personally don't feel like we need to take a position on this, however, but I'll open it up to the other members of the finance committee if either of you feel like we should take a position on it. Then we will not take a position on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other, other business?
We got everything?
So, I guess one question I have is, we have a meeting scheduled for two weeks from now. Do we need that?
Yes.
We do need that.
I wish I could say no, but...
Okay, I think we have a little bit of an attendance, we have, we might have three of the five, so we have a quorum, but I just wanna be open about that then.
I mean, that may change. You know, I think the piece we had talked about, and we could do it now because we did anything that comes forth, we had talked about the Tuesday after Martin Luther King, which I can't believe is now next week. It seemed like it was very far away. Right now, I would not be recommending us moving on a mask because of the spike in cases. We appear, as Hollis and Brookline, in the schools to be getting a little better, okay? But I don't have enough days to make me really feel comfortable saying that yet. So I planned at the end of the week to notify families, but if you said to me at whatever time it is right now tonight, I don't see myself removing masks, just because of the way the data's going. I think it's going to follow the same pattern it did at Thanksgiving and at Halloween, but I am a little worried, because when the governor spoke today, he talked about the new variant really just starting to arrive. And I know people have told me that I shouldn't be worried about children getting sick. That bothers me, and I can't take that position. But at the same time, the biggest piece is also my staffing. This is razor thin, and I'm trying to stay in school and open, and I think that will assist us with that quest. So that, that was the issue that I just wanted to make you aware of, because by the reopening plan, I have that authority, but I just wanted to let you know where my thoughts are, and I can tell you that my email inbox is overwhelmingly running, keeping masks on.
Yep.
So I don't know if you're seeing different, but that's what I'm getting, and we'll move forward. The end of the month meeting, let me have a conversation with Gina and Kelly, and we may be able to do something. If it's just one or two items, we could actually do it after deliberative session.
Okay.
It'd be a little later night, but it's not two nights out.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds good. I guess, I mean, I just, from a, from a masking standpoint, I very much agree with what you just said, because every major city in New Hampshire has gone to mask mandates, and the idea that people are only staying in Hollis and Brookline and not going to Nashua or Merrimack or anywhere else where we're seeing all these is, is quite, it's foolish. People are moving around, and where we've seen our increases, it's been outside of school, but I, I do believe that's helped us with keeping kids in school, and the staffing piece that you just brought up, I think is, really needs to be heard as well. That's a really big deal, and if we have this wiped through, we don't have a remote option and school shuts down then.
I had one question that came kind of with one of your emails about how we're handling things, because we follow DHHS policy. And so the recent policy is that it's the five days, and then you return, you can return as long as you're wearing a tight-fitting mask, right? And they're like, go see the CDC site for more guidance. And if you read in the CDC site, it's like, yep, you can go, and you, as long as you're wearing the tight-fitting mask, you can do it, but do not eat or drink or take off that mask at all in public. So there's an inherent issue with being in school and attending school and going to lunch. So that's an odd, especially in, in an elementary school where we're having snacks in the classroom, and they're kids, right? Like, we're, we're used to them taking some mask breaks, we're used to, like, having that availability and that freedom, and we're hearing more about the Omicron, where it's a more contagious strain, and I can tell you anecdotally, how many kids, because I'm working with kids nonstop, are getting this for the second or third time now, in the last two to three months? So they're, they're coming through and getting it multiple times. So looking at that, how are we going to handle kids who are positive five days in and then saying, yeah, you can come back, but what are we gonna do with them at lunch and snack?
So the DHHS guidelines state that they should do X, Y, and Z. They compare, this year from last year, they lose a little bit of their teeth. That being said, we wanna make sure that we're maintaining the health and safety of all of our students. So if you recall, when CSDA underwent a bit of a difficult time with some clusters, half of the students from this launch are now in the gym, and so we've increased spaces, spacing between students at lunch for that purpose. So while you're not supposed to be in public, we still have, are able to maintain that distance. In some of our schools, we've opened up additional spots for lunch to allow for greater distance, because you can't segregate those who are unable to eat and not allow students to eat throughout the whole school day. So we're, we're taking some mitigation strategies that include increasing the spacing.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. It doesn't give me a warm fuzzier, but I think we've, we've hitched our wagon to DHHS, and that was a point I was gonna make too. So we've hitched our wagon to it. So with that also comes that they are recommending masks, and air counties have substantial transmission as well. So it's a five-day thing, it's the masks and substantial spread, it's not an à la carte menu, it's what we've committed to.
Well, I, I agree, but I think we're like, we're kind of doing it à la carte, right? Because we're, it's...
Well, I don't, I don't think we're doing it à la carte. We haven't necessarily dealt with that issue yet, believe it or not. And we are constantly talking as a leadership team, and I think there are, you know, potential solutions, because we do have multiple spaces and different things to accommodate children. And it's the balancing act between the child being in school because they're now kinda asymptomatic, our parents need to work, I need to get educated, but at the same time to deliver, you know, lunch and all the other things that we're required to do. So as much as I would like to say that it's perfect and we know exactly what we are going to do, I can tell you we're prepared to look at it and continue to make adjustments to be successful, and that's kind of what we've had to do, because one of the things that's changed, as Gina alluded to with DHHS, the reason why should is in there, is we are getting no mandates or recommendations. You know, like, I'll give you an example. When I talked to DHHS prior to vacation about our cases at the co-op, they would only suggest to me that I move to a masked environment. I said, will you give me anything in writing regarding that? And they said, no. Okay, they're not going to make any decisions at the state level, it's going to be the local level, and I'm happy to make those decisions, and I, I've been working with Dan and Tricia in Brookline, and, you know, what Tricia was able to pull off when we had our outbreak here at CSDA was remarkable, and within about a five-day period, we had that under control. You know, I was over to our high school today, our mask compliance with those kids is exceptional. Now, not every mask is exactly as should be, because they're 17 years old and that, but every student that you say to them, hey, fix your mask, they do that. You know, we have great kids, and we can't underestimate our success being directly related to the wonderful product, the child, that the parents send to us every day. You know, your kids are following the rules, and if we have to make up a new protocol around lunches to keep kids safe, we will do that. But I really, as much as possible, want the kids in the physical building, because that's what they tell me. You know, when I was over to high school today, the seniors, the question they have for me, we're not going remote, I always, that's, that's the last thing they wanna do.
Right.
So as much as they might not wanna wear a mask, they're willing to wear a mask and abide by all the rules to be able to be there on a daily basis.
I don't...
So we will update you on the meeting later this month.
Okay.
And other than that, we are done with our business.
Thank you. So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Five zero. Do you need to do that too?
Yes, and I just wanted to remind people, the deliberative session is February 7th, and so the finance committee is adjourned.
Okay.
Board numbers?
Thank you.
Kelly needs signature.
Okay.
Okay, because you've approved the, the warrant, this allows her to officially post...